All right. Everybody good? Have what they need here for now? So two, Thursday, July thirty first at six P M. We're going to call our special city council meeting to order with a quick roll call. The I'll do the roll call for you these first couple of times so you can get used to it. Sue Erickson, Ken May. He says here, he's just muted right now, but he did say here Joel Newman. Not present Sean Burtzel.
Here.
Craig Conley.
Here.
Perfect citizens forum. Tara, would you like to comment tonight? No citizens, I I did receive one. I'm just gonna read you guys this really quick cuz it did come in today cuz somebody saw there was a meeting, so I wanna share it. I'll bring it up at the regular council meeting as well. But just a quick message here. Wondering if you can share these few things with council. I wanted to mention that we, and this is trailside area down by, I think, close to you, Ken. We we are not able to hear the tornado siren very well inside of our house. It seems very faint. Not sure if you've heard this from other people. Also, I walk the trails daily. There is a backyard between the trail and Carroll where their sump pump output goes right over the trail. It's slick and slimy. I always try to walk around it, but I did slip and fall on it yesterday. It's definitely not safe. I can get you the exact address if needed. And then lastly, would it be possible to send a reminder out to folks that when mowing, it's illegal to blow your grass out in the street and not? Not sure about sidewalks too, but I'm baffled at the houses that do this photo attached for reference, and it's simply just a photo where all the grass clippings are thrown in the street. So just a couple there to know.
The tornado sirens, those are outdoor warning sirens sirens. So they're not meant to be heard indoor. I think this has been discussed in years past. Don't know, but still the.
Okay.
Standard, but I believe that's the deal.
Ben's nodding a little bit.
Do we know if they're outdoors?
They they were in their house. Yeah. So.
As long as they're all working, I don't know that there's.
That there's necessarily anything, but as I don't know if there's the one thing to possibly look at is just. At that south side has probably grown quite a bit since we added a siren.
Yeah, I don't know where.
So I don't know what there's gotta be a coverage standard or something, but. Uh, we could.
Being half of our coverage with those, but I don't.
It's right.
There's one.
There's one right there.
I can hear it at my house.
Yeah.
Yeah, so these people would be, I think, northwest of there, but across the creek and. So.
And I haven't noticed it. I read more fair, but she said that that slippery spot you're talking about. She said she almost lost her bike on it, so.
Is there? I'll get it. I'll get it for you. Yeah.
I didn't realize this is something, but.
Sounds like she thinks it's a discharge, which there's one down the street here that discharges right into the street too.
There's a lot of disurges in the street.
Yeah. And I know there was talk about that in the past about a line, but.
Common practice for quite a while. There's no storms or.
So yeah. Where do you? Yep. Okay, so that's the only citizen comment that I've had here.
Can I throw out a related comment? I noticed I walked over here. School's gonna be starting before long. The sidewalks on Lynn Street are a hot mess. There are people who haven't cleaned up after storms. We've got kids walking to school in a month, less than a month. Maybe we could take a look at at least getting people there.
Wait a minute.
Clean them up.
That. There is probably, we could probably ask Harrison with code Iowa code enforcement to take a look at some of that.
Start about maybe.
Yeah, I mean, our code does say it's property owners responsibility to replace it and fix it, but also maintain it.
Question, but at least you can pick up sticks off of your.
Yeah.
People after.
Yeah.
I remember your husband had his hip replaced. You should have sent us a picture.
Thank you. No, we couldn't have done that. After I've said that, it's.
Yep.
We are in in. We are not in accordance with. A D A guidelines for sidewalks.
Especially that will be in our main entrance access to school.
Thank you.
It's been. Talk to Jim with the grant application to try to get that cuz that's what we get. Safe sidewalks.
Safe routes to school.
Safe. There we go.
Yep.
So maybe some pursue Lindsay put that on your grant application list.
We we just needed to, we just need to get. Counsel in line on what the strategy is gonna be because are we paying for it? Are we gonna start a strategy where everybody's paying for it? So. I think we need to have it on certainly, and that that code enforcement should happen naturally dead trees limbs yard in the yard. That will happen naturally per our code. Dead trees are not to be. Left lane, especially in the public right away. But if they're in the public right away.
They are sticks, but you can pick those up after.
They're in the public right away or they ours to pick up?
Probably.
Most ordinances require the adjacent property owner to maintain.
Okay.
I don't think picking up sticks leaves.
Much lower than.
It's a maintenance thing.
Yeah, you would think, you know. Okay. Yeah, and that's something as we talk about strategic planning, comprehensive and capital planning side, just like curbs. Streets sidewalks are definitely inaccessible and determining. How and what to fix. Okay. You'll notice the citizen forum was just moved up. This was a Jerry recommendation, just in case there was counsel or citizen that wanted to make comments about items that were on the consent agenda. So. Uh, just a recommendation that I thought was good, so we'll move to the consent agenda. We have some claims in here. We do have the minutes from the fifteenth meeting. We have a street closure for that heart of Iowa nature trail dedication. It's this Saturday, next Saturday, a week from Saturday. Uh, portable restroom rental for that. And then there's an item in here that we put on here to be safe. There's a C D renewal for the library that their library board voted and requested to just roll and keep in in the C D. Um, and renew it. So I think Jerry. And I talked about it and he said, you know, I think counsel should be privy to it because we do oversee the budget. Um, associated with the library, but. It's just a safety here. I don't think anybody necessarily has an objection. I did ask if we knew, and I know I doubt Lindsay got to it, if we knew what. You know, what is the dollar amount for that they put in the C D?
Yeah. Uh, Lindsay checked today with South Story Bank and for a three month C D, it four point. Two zero percent and then a twelve month is three point eight five. On Monday, I called and requested the same information and they said, uh, for a twelve month, it was. Three point seven five, so that shows you like how quickly things can change.
Yeah, it was after.
Yep.
So again, it's since it's an investment. Concern agenda.
But do we know? So the eleven thousand seventy one and the fires seventy six ninety seven. Are those just rollover funds that they had or budget funds that they're gotten?
We haven't got that information yet.
For both of them?
No. Somebody donated.
It was a donation.
Money and it was in a C D always, but the library didn't know until.
Recently.
A year ago or so. Um, so surprise, there's my so it's not rollover money.
Okay, it was a donation.
Yeah.
And I tried to get square with Jen on whether both of those were there. She wasn't real clear.
The fire, yeah, we can follow, we can follow up on that, but I don't, I don't think at this time. If those departments aren't wanting to spend it, we haven't there it's in based on historical procedure, it's their money, so.
No objection for me. I'm just.
Yeah, and the donation is obviously their money, so. So I just didn't know, I just didn't know what it was, you know, it's like what we have some of that in the C D and. Our rate is better than.
Better than.
Current rate is better than the C D for twelve months, so. Is there any questions or deliberation related to the consent agenda by anyone?
Just claims, both on Mark. Uh, it's a nine thousand dollar filter sleeve.
I'm pretty sure that those are the filter sleeve replacements that they had to replace to get the pool going. Yeah, I think they're like these little socks, I think.
I don't know.
I saw them down there today.
Which item was that?
That's the nine thousand dollar claim. Claim. Filter sleeve. Oh, from Echo, so why?
And three grand on toilets.
Was that the part of pennies?
Yeah.
Fourth of July, probably.
Oh, that's fourth of July, so we're in a rear start.
I'm guessing.
I'm guessing also, but that's typical.
Okay. And then the last one on the first page was true north.
That'd be our insurance broker. Oh, yeah, that's the additional premium generated by three twenty one main.
Oh, right.
Because if you remember when they came to do a walkthrough with us, they uncovered that we had buildings on our policy that we hadn't known for years.
Okay.
And we then covered, we had other buildings that weren't covered. This was one of them, so. I when he told me that that day, I sent the letter to bind the coverage on three twenty one for the physical in liability to have it. It's included under liability, but we got some physical coverage on it now. For a stated value, and then we removed. The building that gross win is in today was on our policy.
Oh.
Any chance to get a credit?
I don't, I don't know the exact answer to that. Well, we haven't received an invoice to say if we're getting a credit or not, but I did ask the question in the emails.
The twenty grand from inroads is that?
That is the patching north.
That was twenty grand. Anybody else concerned the fact that that's really rough, really rough?
Oh, it's terrible.
Hot holes were, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. It sucks.
I think it throws you around just as much as the old.
Gold did, yeah.
Torn up blacktop did.
I guess I'm a little resistant on that.
Do you quote some of that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Some little resistance.
We knew we had to patch it.
And that twenty grand, if none of us are happy with. The bit of him.
I mean, I think we could ask for details. I I we know I the only thing I knew about it was Mark said. That they told them like it will be better than what it is, but it's not. It's a, this is a survival patch. You don't. We're not gonna be able to get it very good with the rest of the road.
There's no base underneath it.
There's pretty much nothing there. Yeah, so.
Which I agree.
I don't think it's good either. I agree that it's not good either. But.
It'd be at least worth the question. Why is this so damn rough? Cause yeah, duration, I don't expect to last forever. That we just gotta. But having to be really rough right from the get go, that seems a little.
They were kind of racing that storm and they did it, and that's why I didn't know that.
You kind of wonder too a little bit if.
Battling with the surface there.
You're gonna wonder too if it was smooth because you were pretty much driving on gravel in most of those scenarios, and now you're driving on hard surface again. It's an easy question to ask. Obviously, this is where. You know, one of the things that has not been practiced has been to, you know, in theory, we're supposed to be approving practices or approving claims. Pre proactively ahead of expenses and our practice here since I started was pretty much reactive approval of claims, so.
Yeah, I can. It's challenged or the the right way.
Very much so. There's a balance for sure. So. Uh, but what's the? Jerry can follow up on them.
What's the timeline and of when Lynn's gonna be completely redone? Do we have any estimate of that?
I think all that we've done is, uh, when he before Mark approved to do that, he received that indication. Which I think he shared at one of the last council meetings a couple, and it was six hundred thousand or something to redo.
Right. I just don't know where the timeline is of that because.
We haven't pinpointed that. We need, we I think need to, as we go into budgeting, one of the things that. Jerry will do is we'll go through the capital kind of improvement plan and determine when is the right time. And I think scope, like I think scope is still open is like, does there need to be? It hasn't been engineered. Should we put a turning lane in there? Should we not put a turning lane in there? Are we putting a safe route to school? Are we putting curb and gutter? Are we adding or are we adding a connection of the trail to Main Street or? Are we finishing that last? There's one block left of sidewalk on the north side. To have that eight foot wide sidewalk that they've done all the way from where we're at at City Hall to the school. On the north side, they've got that nice big sidewalk they did in front of where we live. To the east, so there's one block left of that and that sidewalk stinks. So do you, is that a part of the scope? I think we need to. Uh, discuss what is logical from the scope standpoint.
And are we talking about from the intersection of R thirty eight to the.
Main Street to the bike path, yeah.
For sidewalks, but then R thirty.
Yeah. R thirty eight sidewalks all the way to eleventh would be the dream. I think timeline scope and then it should probably be engineered because there's utilities that we think may be in the right away. I think it was just an indication. What's it take to bring in the dirt, get it wide enough? Cause it needs to be widened, and I think the indication from inroads then was six hundred thousand, so.
Yeah, and that was just from Maine North.
Maine to the bike path.
Right.
No sidewalks.
From May not R thirty eight?
No.
Two ten, you're thinking. Yeah, no, that's.
Two blocks.
It needs to be widened and changed, so. I think we need to have discussion.
My concern is just that in light of of the condition that that patch is in, I think it presents a real safety problem. And and if that's the best that can be done on a patch situation, I just think it moves our priority up the priority list. To look at at least redoing that that road from Main Street North because I think it's a it's a huge safety problem. The way that is right now, it really tosses you around. On that road. And um. It that's this is only what two months in? What's that thing gonna look like after winter? I mean, I don't know if we're gonna be any better off than we were. Two months ago, by the time we go through a winter. I I just think we have to move that priority up in terms of redoing that that block of road, even though none of us wants to. Spend that kind of money on that block.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. It's on the list. Jerry's got it down. We'll have to address it as we go into the budgeting for the next year cuz we I don't. We didn't put any of that into this budget here. I think that's twenty thousand of Mark's fifty thousand. For the end of last year. When was it? Uh, I that work was done right before July first. It was done in June, right? I think that was spending the remainder of his road budget. Which is only fifty thousand dollars a year for road repair. I do think we could go back and ask about the quality. There might be something to it.
It's concerning to me. I mean, if if.
Get details.
If you did your driveway for twenty grand and it looked like that.
Yeah.
Think you paid a bill.
Yeah. Perfect. Jerry will report back. Do you want to hold on?
Are we pulling that?
We want to pull that off of.
That claim out.
To be on the highway guy, so I don't know if it's really that bad, but I've never seen a patch other than the other one she did with the hand tamper that looked that bad that quickly.
It was like that.
Day one.
Yeah. Well, I was on it when it comes up and I thought I had a flat tire.
So let's pull it out. Let's pull that claim out. Let's fo- follow up. Let's let's ask about it. Let's push back on it a little bit.
Negotiate.
And and uh, move forward with approving the other claims, uh, as long as the rest of the consent agenda pulling out. The inroads payment of twenty thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty six for what we believe to be street repairs. We can, we can, there's probably an, there was an invoice. I don't know if there was multiple items on the invoice or not, but we'll pull it out for now. We'll be meeting again in two weeks, so we can. We won't delay it too much on them. If if there's an explanation. I would, uh, take a motion now if there's no other questions about the consent agenda.
One question. Uh, this is not a complaint cuz we're just getting on our feet, but can we? Kind of get the claims and I've had this earlier. It was, I didn't get to reading the claims. Due to how late they came, so you can in the future get them earlier. That would be great.
Yeah, for the record, they weren't set up till like this afternoon, so we we will do better.
We will.
Yeah, the new team will do better.
That's right.
Yeah.
And I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Uh, Sue Erickson with the first, Craig Conley with the second. All those in favor favor signify with the sign I.
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 Opposed? Same sign and any abstentions, okay. Business items, discussion and consideration of revolution, resolution five. This is setting the public hearing for August twenty eighth. To amend the city's urban renewal plan to include homes by advantage properties located on Third Avenue. We've talked about this. We've met with the attorney. We've been back and forth with attorney. We are going to the developers, uh, the builder homes by advantage is gonna work with us here. We have come to the agreement that we are going to utilize an urban renewal district. The urban renewal district is gonna be. Um, in L M I. To cover us for L M I so that we can utilize the tool of TIF to recover the funds. That we are offering in the form of a grant to homes by advantage. Uh, that's why the special meeting really was triggered. That is one of the two main reasons. Was for the setting of this public hearing to try to keep this progressing so that, uh, homes by advantage can try to sell those houses and have somebody in it before. Fall gets too far along. We have an update on the next item on the agenda, but for this item, is there any questions related to or concerns with setting that public hearing for August twenty eighth?
Yes, one quick question about that. Um, I know at the last meeting I see Rogers on, but um, there was, he thought he had somebody already that was. Further along than just interested in the in one of those houses that was not gonna be using L M I if if they're sold without. An L M I applicant involved in there. Do we need to go through all these steps?
Um, yes, yes, the short answer is this is just for the urban renewal area. What you're talking about would dive deeper into the actual contractual development agreement with homes by advantage. Um, for this sake, the reason we're doing this is just so that the city can declare to TIF district and. Make that claim to recuperate those funds.
Right, and I'm okay with that. I just, I just wanted to discuss the the whole global issue of of this. Of all of these resolutions that deal with this. As a whole versus individually if they, if it was, if the L M I is not gonna be part of it. And we probably, it's probably too early to know that. You don't know anything until they close, so.
Well, the L M I is part of it because we asked them to set the houses. At a price point that was below a certain number. The bank has confirmed and and that that purchase, that home price is. Affordable to someone who's at the eighty percent threshold of. The median county income. So in theory, we as a council, and we haven't officially taken this action yet, but have to can define, we can define that house as an L M I qualified house. When you take, and that's what I talked about the last time. So that's how we're using, and that's why we're going about it. The only way we're using TIF is because it's an L M I for an L M I project essentially.
I thought the TIFs would be utility. That was the fifty grand, so we recoup the money that we're giving them.
Correct, but but it. In order to use it as an urban renewal area, it has to be a type of project, and because we're not, TIF can't be, standard TIF cannot be utilized. For projects where there's no infra- infrastructure turned over to the city. Or dedicated to the city in the end, because this project has none of that. Outside of the exception of a sidewalk, maybe, which will be an incremental expense in the grand scheme. The alternative was to use. I'll get the, there's a technical term, but that use the L M I version of a TIF area for an L M I specific project. Where the the project inside of that area is going to be an L M I project. So that is why the urban renewal agreement, and that's what we're approving right now, is to designate and define the urban renewal area.
Okay.
For that TIF project. This agree, once we have an urban renewed area, then we have to execute a development agreement. And that's the development agreement that will dictate what we're giving and how we're giving it.
Okay, so two separate things.
Cause yeah, two separate things. This is just, we are legally establishing that this is, these two lots are an urban renewal area. For a TIF or for an L M I project.
Okay.
Essentially. And the attorney used better words than I did on that about like, I don't, I maybe blighted is the right word. In that area.
So this just says it's. The qualifying L M I project, and then the other half, the purchaser has to be L M I qualified also.
That's the development agreement. That's not this agreement. Yep, that's this one. So this right now is just setting the.
Says that came.
The area that we are defining as urban area so that we will have the tool of TIF to utilize should we execute a development agreement. And pass the urban renewal area.
Yeah, setting it here.
Yep. So this is the.
But the L M I is, the actual payout of the L M I is is to the purchase, home purchaser, and that's only if they qualify. Isn't that correct? And I realize those are late, those are subsequent. Agreements that we're looking at, but.
That's, I would say, uh, that that is undetermined at this point because we have not finalized or executed a development agreement. That is the next item on the agenda.
Right. Okay.
So we should approve the urban renewal area. We should motion to.
To set the hearing.
To set the hearing for the urban renewal area. It's not we're not finally is anything necessarily. We're just setting the clock in motion, so the public.
On this item, yes.
And then we should move to the development agreement. A Ken first, Ken May with the first.
Won't be here that day. I could probably zoom in, but.
You can second either way, though.
Okay, I'll second.
Sean Burtzel with a second. All those in favor signify with. Yep, if you'd like.
The third.
Deliberation. The what?
Sixth. Is it our planning and zoning commission?
Wait, sixth on the first page.
It's okay.
You need a. You're looking at.
Yes, I just wanna make sure that we can get all these things done in the right timeline, so as long as it's hours, we can get our own committee. I did some state wonder.
Yeah.
I didn't know what that meant, so I just wanna make sure.
That's on me to get that down.
Cuz otherwise it's kind of out of our control if it's somebody else's.
That's the city's.
Cool. Then no, I'm, that's the only discussion when I had.
Good question. Uh, first from Ken, a second from Sean. Not any more deliberation. All those in favor signify with I.
I.
Opposed? Same sign and any abstentions. Okay, so that, uh, set the public hearing. That public hearing's on August twenty eighth. If you guys don't have that on your calendar, that's another special meeting. Okay, so now the development agreement. We we, uh, have gone back and forth on this. We've done some research on this. Um, to determine what the right path is. We, Jerry has talked with Roger today. I've talked with Roger. He's talked with the builder. Um, homes by advantage, and what they have asked is if we would be willing to table this agreement. For their attorney to finish the review of it. We can still discuss the contents of it, but the the homes by advantage would like their attorney to finish their review before we. Um, move forward on this development agreement. So, um, and this was the setting of the public hearing for the development agreement, so it might move us back a little bit timing wise, but they would like their attorney wants a deeper review on it. And we honestly, to be honest with you guys, have been going back and forth to get the final version came in.
Our attorney.
Our attorney getting the final version of the development agreement came in later than. We would have liked, but we have been under the gun on this more so than we wanted to be after we learned some things. Roger, did you want to say anything quick?
Well, you just, can you, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
You just said, uh, tabling it might set us back a bit, but I was thinking there really wasn't anything date sensitive about the development agreement. It's the public hearing that is critical. If this, if this. Development agreement is approved at the next council, regular scheduled council meeting, that still puts us on the same calendar, doesn't it?
No, I believe we have to have a public hearing for this, right? As well, the development agreement.
Yeah, it's a part of the urban renewal plan. Um, but in our, we have a notification requirement. To publish notice before the public hearing, which would be the twenty, so we have a between a four and a twenty day. Uh, requirement, but we can still meet that.
Okay, so we're okay. If you don't. Yeah, okay.
So Jerry, what is the date that is meaningful for the developers agreement to be noticed to be sent out?
Well, the date that we're shooting for is August twenty eighth, but the next regular city council meeting is the eleventh.
So if that is approved on the eleventh, is that enough notice for the twenty eighth?
Yeah, cuz it's, uh, not less than four and not.
Four and twenty, so we'll have enough time to do it.
That will put us on track cuz the thirty first would be twenty days after, so we'd be inside of the required window.
Between four and twenty.
Between four and twenty. Very good. That was, that was advantages only concern. We, we don't want to set the calendar back. We. We were trying to be as cooperative as possible, but we would like to have the ability to finish the houses and sell them.
Yep, yeah, we just again, uh, as we discussed, you know, uh, keeping the, keeping. We need to get this done before completion of the home, full completion of the home. Yes, which I think we've talked about, so.
Builder is aware.
Yep, okay, fixtures, some fixtures and some other outside stuff we talked about, so.
So it sounds like we're table on this for now.
Yeah, for the review of the developer, but if there's questions from council that we need to discuss or talk about, because I think I'm here, Ken asked a question a little bit. About the development agreement.
So I have a couple, maybe the same as Ken's.
Yeah, so why don't get the question.
But we're only obligated to the fifty and that's paid via TIF.
That's paid, I clarify, that's paid via general fund. And then we. The recuperism mechan- mechanism for the city is via TIF.
And uh, we're obligated with the first fifty grand. The addition, twenty five thousand per lot.
Up to twenty five thousand with their receipts on the infrastructure related expenses.
Yep, and then the additional.
Is what we verbally have committed to. The agreement reads a little bit different and that's been a sticking point a little bit in con- conversation about the way the attorneys had worded it back.
Yeah, and I just get a thorough job.
Which really just goes into the attorney uses a word that is. I believe expects to. Exceed twenty five thousand and it kind of words it more like they're going to be beyond that dollar amount per house. And I think that's where some of the review and verification that. Homes by advantage would like to do is just the way that it's worded.
The agreement uses the phrase at least. And we're concerned that we aren't going to have at least. We're trying, we've tried to manage those expensive for, expenses for everybody to keep them as affordable as possible. So we don't think there will be at least fifty thousand dollars of infrastructure.
I missed that. I saw the up to seventy. I missed the at least fifty. So, you read it better than I have, obviously.
Well, unless it was changed, did it get changed in the final agreement? I guess I didn't. Because we've been talking back and forth, I, I don't know that I went back and checked it up because I thought. The attorney said he was leaving it as up to or as at least.
In filler.
I'm on page three, um, like third sentence now. Says uh, up to seventy grand. But maybe there's another section where it says.
Yeah, there's, there were three, there were, there were four different sections that included the phrase at least. I don't actually have, have it pulled up right now. I should.
Sue usually does a better job of reading than I do.
In the paper this time, so I did not thoroughly read.
So, but it sounds like this is not time sensitive, but the general principle, if I remember right, Taylor is fifty grand reimbursed via TIF.
Up to.
For the utilities.
On both, twenty five.
And then ten grand apiece, twenty thousand is if the buyer is LMI.
The attorney, the attorney. Advised that it would not be appropriate for us to provide down payment assistance. To an LMI buyer because we have not established a program of such. And we would need to establish a program before we could begin the practice of. Handing individuals down payments or cash. We would want to establish the program. The timeline of establishing a program was as long or longer than where we were at here. So I believe the discussion was that if the buyer was. How is it worded in there?
We're gonna put the responsibility on.
We put the responsibility on the seller. Okay. Completion, sale of the homes, maintain all my uh, process of construction.
While you're looking, while you're looking for that Taylor, uh, it's on section two point one H. Where it says developer expects that construction of site improvements will cost at least fifty thousand dollars.
And Roger saying that is not true?
We hope not.
The word, they're worried about the word at least.
We hope not. We're trying to keep it under fifty thousand dollars. For the cities, for the cities benefit.
And we went back to the attorney on that.
They're trying to keep it under fifty thousand, so then we would give them under fifty thousand.
Yeah, so the only argument is, is it up to or at least?
Cause they're worried if we, if they keep it. If they're under fifty, at least fifty, they get nothing.
That's what I think.
If we don't hit fifty grand, there's no payout. That's the way.
It's also contradicted. There's a, we pushed back on the attorney about that wording and said up to, and she said, no, this is the correct wording, is what our attorney said on our pushback. We've, we've reviewed it and this accomplishes what your objective is.
That's, that's why, that's why advantage would like their attorney to review it sometime. An attorney, you can talk to an attorney and they say, oh yeah, this works. And we all shake our heads and say, okay, it doesn't make sense to us, but the attorneys agree. That's probably what's going to happen here.
With you there.
And I think we set that in theory, in theory, I think we set that number because the estimate was, yeah, it's. I think Roger, you gave us a window of what you thought maybe could be, and it was in the, up to twenty five thousand, so. I think that's how we got there, but the, the wording, it's, we're tabling it to let the attorneys figure out if that's the right word or not.
Yep, the common sense.
And if they wanna, if there's a response from their attorney that goes to ours, we'll get it sorted out and get it executed the right way.
But we still need the timeline with no action today.
I cannot find the section about the additional ten thousand or. I was trying to find it here. It's all about defaults and developer shall file petition bankruptcy.
The ten thousand you're looking for is in what, what we provided for infrastructure, is that right?
No, that is for.
Page twenty five of the packet.
Eight point one.
Towards the end of eight point one. Eight point one B.
Okay. Um, calculation of grant payment. It's right here, yeah, number uh, I I under B. If the developer has submitted written documentation evidence that a financial credit of at least ten thousand dollars was pr- was provided by developer to the home buyer at the time of closing. For sale of the house unit to homeowner, then the amount of all my housing grant will be increased by ten thousand dollars up to thirty five thousand. The financial credit provided by developer to the home buyer at closing may be in the form of. Purchase price reduction, a credit to the home buyer on the closing statement or a cash payment to the home buyer at closing. There is not necessarily. A stipulation that. In that reading, there's not a stipulation that I see that says their buyer has to be an LMI qualified buyer. Which convolutes things because to qualify an LMI buyer, they'll have to, there would be an income verification process probably to verify that. Versus the houses being LMI qualified.
It seems like the other thing that this does, it, it keeps the city from paying a ten thousand dollar grant directly to the buyer. Since you don't have a program set up for that and it ties the ten thousand through the, the builder. So the builder gives the, the, the grant. And then the builder gets reimbursed up to thirty five thousand then, so it just. It'll, it, it re- relieves the city of the responsibility of having a set program for that right now. But I certainly agree, there's, there has to be a qualification process for the buyer as well for that extra ten thousand.
So look up at A, at the bottom of page ten. City agrees to provide blah, blah, blah. So to a home buyer provided that I, the sale of the housing unit qualifies the unit as an LMI housing unit. So I, I read that as they are LMI qualified.
The house prices.
Which we, the bank already confirmed.
And we'll have to adopt that.
That's a house.
The, the concern is, um. The buyer could go in and not be LMI qualified and the builder could give that ten thousand to that buyer.
That's not the intent though.
That's not the intent. I mean, I think we're all unified that that wasn't, that's not the intent. It's just what? To verify that. Are we on the same page, Roger?
Yeah, um, Taylor, do you know what, what the timing and process is? For the, the council to make the motion to certify the home as an LMI home? It seems like that has to be done at some point according to this agreement.
I think it's simply the review of an I, it, it's been very. The state has been somewhat, is somewhat lax apparently on what that definition is. I think council can review a letter. From the bank and say. Yeah, this, this, if a family of, if a, it's a three bedroom house and it's logical that a. Husband and wife or spouses could buy this house with two children and it would accommodate four people comfortably. And the average, the eighty percent median income is ninety thousand, like ninety nine thousand in the county of Story County, eighty percent for a family of four. If the bank says, yeah, we would lend. Two hundred ninety nine thousand to a person earning ninety nine thousand dollars a year, then we can look at it and say. Well, it's affordable to someone at the LMI level income. So we are deeming that this house is LMI affordable.
Do we have that letter?
We don't have that letter yet. But that's how we would, that's how the execution would happen, so. And that's all, all those pieces are set up to execute, but it, it came down to whether this is going to get executed, whether we needed to do that or not, kinda. So if we're going to get this done, then that'll be a part of. Determining, setting the standard for that. Does that make sense to everybody? If it was a two bedroom house, we'd go look at a family of three, or if it was one, we'd look at two.
It feels like we just need to make, make sure we get that letter. We'd hate to get through everything else and get to the end and. Find out, well, we never approved the house.
I'm not worried about that at all. I'm more worried about the fact that we're getting given another ten grand without, to somebody that's not an LMI buyer potentially. Without a clawback in our agreement right now, or without a defining of that. That's what I guess I'm seeing missing. In that section, cause that wasn't our intent. Our intent was to give to a buyer that would qualify as an LMI buyer.
And that the builder is certainly in agreement with that, so we want the same thing you do there.
Yeah. Yeah, I have no concern about the execution of it. It's just uh, back to the same. As the at least versus undefined. So Jerry, can you? Can you ask about that?
Yes.
How we could limit that? In the simplest form possible.
I have one other nitpicky wording question.
Yep.
Um, back in eight point one, under B, under. Number two starts with if the developer has submitted written documentation. Blah, blah, blah. Then the amount of the LMI housing grant will be increased by ten thousand dollars up to a total amount of thirty five thousand dollars. Now, if the infrastructure improvements did not reach fifty thousand. This reads to me like maybe they would still be expecting the thirty five thousand. Um, should it say up to a total maximum amount of thirty five thousand dollars?
I thi- I think that's what it's saying. That's how I read it. It's increased by ten thousand. We've already established up to twenty five thousand. So they're just combining that the up to limit is thirty five thousand. It's the rules to obtain the.
Cause you apply the, you apply the items above and then you bring this one down here. And you apply the additional ten thousand.
Yeah, I think it's still just runs into that at least wording above.
Yeah, but this wording in section two, you're not worried about up to a total of thirty five thousand. You're not worried about that wording.
P two is not bothering me the at least.
It's the at least that you're worried about, yeah.
I see they're concerned about.
Okay.
No more questions. I mean, we table this.
So move we table this, we'll do some homework. Roger will report back. We'll leave this to Roger and Jerry to go back and forth and I'll help as needed since I. Started some of this process or helped them in the beginning of this process, so whatever I can do to help through the language part of it.
Before I second, and I might have to go backwards. Turns out, one of the houses, a good friend of mine is actually bidding on it. So.
A good friend of yours wants, is interested in buying it?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um, I forgot to say that before I voted on the last one.
Last one's fine, cause you're defining the urban renewal area. This one would just be.
You're concerned about a conflict of interest? Financial benefit that you're gonna, is there a financial benefit?
Not to him personally, but he could in theory be giving it to a friend.
Well, I'll.
It, it doesn't matter. It probably doesn't matter, cause we have the votes in the table. I think it's good he disclosed and, and probably just for the cleanest sake. You could just abstain as long as we have the votes. You wouldn't want anybody to say, you did that so your friend could get ten grand off.
Exactly.
Yeah, then let's, let's. Sue will second, okay. All those in favor of tabling the development agreement to be finalized on the eight, August eleventh meeting. With answers between now and then to be shared at that meeting, uh, signify with the sign I. So that's three, opposed, same sign and abstentions. Nope, I don't think you have to on the last one because you agree to establishing the urban renewal area for the recuperation of the investment. Which I, there's no conflict there. The only conflict there is you don't want to waste money, um, which is a good thing. Uh, all right. Roger, thank you for being here. We'll sort this, we'll get this sorted out. Let us know once you have homes by advantages response. We can, we can report back with the cop, and Jerry's pretty good about jumping on this, so we'll probably hear something tomorrow from the attorney regarding the. Like, how do we, how do we protect ourselves from giving the additional ten thousand to a non LMI buyer? Like what?
Yeah, I, I agree with that Taylor. So we have asked our attorney, the homes by advantage attorney to have uh, his response to us by the end of the day. On the sixth, next Wednesday. Um, when does your packet go out for the eleventh meeting?
Probably that day or close. I mean, that's Jerry's target.
I think it's Thursday, isn't it?
Thursdays. It can be amended up to twenty four hours before the meeting.
Okay.
But we're trying to get our packets out Wednesday, Thursday timeframe so that council has the opportunity to.
Yeah, Thursday would be. The seventh. Between the seventh and, and the eighth would be. So hopefully we'll have our response by the end of the sixth and then on the day the seventh, we'll. Try to hammer out whatever needs hammered out. Unfortunately, I get on a plane to go to Africa on the eighth. So I won't be around until the eleventh, uh, on the eleventh, so I, I just need to make sure we have everything put together before I leave on the eighth. Gives us the seventh, Jerry.
Yeah, you and Jerry can work it out.
Yep, sounds great.
He's available now, full time, so.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. Moving to. Our next item on the agenda, which is our, so now we're getting into the discussion, third bullet point and consideration of resolution six. Setting a city election on the question of a change in use of the local option sales and service tax revenues in the city of Slater, Iowa. Filing with Story County Auditor and we'll replicate that in the next line as well.
Question back on the development agreement. There's a page in there that certifies the costs, site improvements costs that are all blank. I assume that all gets filled in before we. Approve it, okay?
Yeah, that's our protection so that we just don't give twenty five thousand. We want receipts on what they've paid from an infrastructure standpoint.
Right, but if we were going to approve that tonight, that would have been filled in, right?
Uh, the development agreement?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that page that shows their costs. Has to be filled out before we will fi- approve this, assuming we do this on the next, in the meeting.
I think we're, I, no, I think we approve the agreement and then we accept the agreement later, sign off, sign the agreement. After the execution is completed. I think there's triggers inside of that, that I remember.
Well, I think that's why they're concerned with uh, at least. Cause they're not going to hit that twenty five thousand a lot, so that we're, we're going to go into the agreement with them. And then we're not going to pay them until we get our receipts. We're only going to pay them up to. Twenty five thousand, but it's going to be less than that. So they're worried if they don't hit the fifty. So they're worried if they don't hit the fifty thousand, they don't get anything. And like us, we don't wanna spend that much. So I think, I think that'll get filled out later.
What we're accepting is, we are, that's the certification document. What we're accepting is. That they have to provide the qualified costs, and if they do, then we'll pay everything up to twenty five thousand in the qualified. So this will be a final part of the doc, of the agreement that gets filed.
After we've approved the agreement.
We've approved the agreement and the terms. This is their proof. They'll turn this in as proof that these are their certified costs.
We couldn't actually go into. Agreement with them.
Okay, and never pay them a dime.
Cuz they never turn.
The houses could get destroyed tomorrow and in a storm and this could all change.
Yes.
Knock on wood.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted that clarified when that gets filled out.
You will, you will see this. Before we pay them. This certified cost. She, she filled out by them.
Right.
Which we'll have to approve probably again.
Which we'll approve again.
Yeah.
And we have the public hearing still, so.
Yeah.
Can. So this is the lost. I mean, I don't think anybody's, everybody knew this was coming. This is the second reason why we had to have this meeting so quick is because we have to have this. To the county auditor ninety days before the election. So. We have got, we gotta, we need to approve this tonight. Is there questions about it?
Yep.
Uh, and I already sent this back to you, Jared. Oh. I find the first statement, uh, I want page three. Uh, where it says zero percent of property tax relief. Uh. What little I understand. That kinda language is required in there. But does that have to be that? It's kinda in your face. Uh, to me, that's, uh, I guess an inflammatory statement. Who in this room, if you said you can lower your property taxes, wouldn't say heck yes.
Yeah.
So how strict is that? I wouldn't mind seeing something like zero percent dedicated to property tax for stress relief. It doesn't exclude it right now. It says zero, which is what I sent to Jared. Saying that. If you say it's zero percent tax, property tax relief. I think that would preclude from using it for property taxes we so chose.
Say that one more time, that last part?
If you say it's zero percent for property tax relief. Even if we wanted to use it for property tax, now we can't cuz now we've asked the resolution saying it's zero percent. So I'm concerned with that's, that statement.
Right.
And that's why I suggested, you know, dedicated exclusively to. Rather than just saying zero percent for that property tax relief.
So there is a, I had to look, I had to look this up too because there is a, I'm referring to an Iowa League of Cities. Um, article from twenty twenty three. It's on their website. I can probably figure out how to share it here. Um, September eleven.
While you're doing that, two lines down from there, Craig, it says a hundred percent for any lawful purpose and it. Probably should be up to a hundred percent. Because it's same thing. It locks us in. We're not, we didn't do this to be locked into hundred percent and zero.
Yep, and that, and Ken, just for relative, uh, I think you were the one that made the suggestion at eighty percent. I didn't know if we wanted to go ahead and leave it to zero. Cuz it is nice to have flexibility, or did we wanna leave it at twenty? I don't know.
I think, I understand what you're saying. This is, this is, and then I'll share a thought, but this is what the league's article says, and I'm, I'm. Taking a section out of here, but it says, the election is countywide, but the lost will only apply in those incorporated or unincorporated areas of the county where the majority of the eligible electors approve the tax. The ballot must specify the type of tax, in this case, local option sales tax. The tax rate, not more than one percent. The date it will be imposed. The approximate amount of local option tax revenue that will be used for property tax relief. If any, the specific purpose for which the local option tax revenues will be spent if for purposes other than property tax relief. A sunset clause for termination of the tax, which is optional cuz we obviously don't want to sunset the local sales tax since the county's adopted it. And I, I see, I, I understand what you're saying. I see what you're saying. I think it has to say in there that. We're classifying zero percent as property tax relief. By law, or it could say ten percent or twenty percent or thirty percent or forty percent. The hard part is, we know that saying that it's zero percent for property tax relief. But then putting it back into here, putting back into lawful use, we can continue. We can use proper local sales tax the right way, the legal way with this wording, with more autonomy. This is the right classification. And prob- we probably should have adopted this language for our property tax, our, our locals, our lo- lost dollars a while ago.
Yes.
To provide this autonomy and to operate.
The way we've been operating.
I don't know exactly because I have, there's not enough investigation to say we haven't been providing said property tax release, but what I do know is. The, the definite way that this should be used for property tax relief is this. You, we should be deducting a levy rate. By the amount of property, by the amount of lost dollars that we get. So we should not be at a max levy rate. We should below, be below the max levy rate. Or we should not be taxing in one of the other levy categories that we can tax in to. Truthfully. Provide property tax relief.
Right.
In the documentation form. We don't. We don't know how or where the explanation or justification, and I tried to get ahold of our financial advisor today to ask the question of. How were we, how are we using these funds to provide property tax relief? And she didn't get back to me cuz I figured she would know that the designation and that's how we were using it. This pays the way to use anyway.
Essentially, anything we've used it for, so any, any. You know, any jet, basically general fund was where that money went into. Um, anything we used in the general fund. Basically lowered what our levy rate would be because we were paying those expenses with the lost money. That we would have otherwise had to levy more for.
But we were. We were levying the max rate is the con- is the, is the. It, I think Craig's saying it wasn't providing property tax relief is what Craig's saying.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that necessarily cuz I don't know exactly. I haven't heard whether there was, there was something somewhere because there are these other taxing line items. That we can tax on, not just our general levy rate. So I don't wanna go as far to say like, hey, we weren't probably using it to provide property tax relief. I know what you're saying and, but we're also again taking practical. To the legal outline and design of what this was. The legal design was you deduct your levy rate or a levy. By what your sales, local sales tax will give you, and so you reduce what your maximum taxing capacity is. You shouldn't be saying we're using local sales tax for one hundred percent property tax relief. And levying the highest levy in every category that you can.
Right.
That would be contradictory to the purpose.
Yeah. And you, you did find that one form that none of us have ever seen before.
And I don't, I don't know whether we always have, I, I don't, I'm not astute enough to know whether we've always levied the highest amount that we can in every category that we can, or whether we've deducted and done that behind the scenes on the forms.
Those, those levy rates. The, the capability to levy. Has changed in recent years. And at this point, the last thing you wanna do is lower your levy rate because the, the state has. A real taste right now for. Um, not letting you raise your levy rate regardless of, of what. And, and they're gonna, they're gonna actually. Continue to require us to low, continually lower our levy rate to match what the new assessment on the property is. And so. Anytime you lower that rate at this point, you're really handicapping yourself. For the, for the foreseeable future because you're never gonna be able to raise that rate. Um, you're not even gonna be able to continue that rate as long as property values continue to increase the way the state's writing their things now.
So, yeah, no, no, we, we agree. There is something that, there is a form that was shared with me this week that can be shared with everyone. That goes into the different levying categories.
Right.
And there is an employee benefit levy where we can levy for. Police and fire retirement, FICA and Ipers or other employee benefits.
Right.
We have historically had levies in those categories, going back a couple of years.
All of them are just benefits.
Uh, not police and fire, but definitely FICA and Ipers and other employee benefits. And in the last budget period, those were removed. Um. Craig asked about that a little bit, but. Uh, this is a form I'd never seen. Ken will get it to you, but this form is a lot deeper and goes line item by line item versus. The form I think we're all used to seeing, which was kinda the more generalized, uh, summary of that form. So. I, I don't know. We can't get into the, I don't know the, when you have turnover, you can't always be in the mind of how it was being executed, but I haven't confirmed. We may have been. Not levying the maximum we could have in other categories, so in theory we were using it for. Some property tax relief. I think at the end of the day. The discussion is about. Getting property ta- or local sales tax into a category where the city has the greatest amount of autonomy to deploy that. For property tax relief by offsetting the improvement of a street and road or to bond against for a project. We're not determining anything about that tonight outside of trying to get local sales tax categorized right, really, is I think how this has played out.
Yeah, the way we plan using it. Our people.
Arguably, yeah.
Right, but I agree with Craig.
Go ahead, Ken.
I agree with Craig that that, that I would rather that be. You know. At least or, and, and. Up to a hundred percent if we can word it that way, because that, again, it gives us that flexibility. To be able to utilize it if we need to, but. Obviously, I mean, I. Our flavor in, in the city council, as long as I've been on there, is to, is to not levy anything any higher than we needed to, so that.
And I think. I'll ask Jerry to share this with the group, but there was a, there is an attorney response that Jerry shared with me. Um, including our attorney because I, I think Craig had asked back about. I, the, what you read about the question about what this feels like. It feels like it will be detrimental to the result of the, it will be detrimental because of the first seven words or whatever that is. Jerry wrote back to them and I'm, I'm just gonna read the first two lines, but Iowa law requires the ballot proposition to specify the amount of local option tax revenues that will be used for property tax relief. Even if no lost is going toward property tax relief, the city must specify zero percent. Therefore, the language cannot be removed. There is case law and that, that I'll have him send to you guys so that you can review and look at. She also cites Code of Iowa, section four, two, three, B. Uh, five B and what's in bold is the ballot proposition shall also specify the approximate amount of local option tax revenues. That will be used for property tax relief.
What's, I have a comment.
It's hard.
Um, we're slipping on, on the actual.
It's hard.
Um, so.
Contradictory to. Intend, I think. And I think. I think it comes down to just the letter. In theory, by changing the way that it's stated today. We could issue a bond. And that would then. Take some of those funds, which we wouldn't, we've all agreed in the conversation, it would never be a hundred percent of the funds because we wouldn't be allowed to bond for a hundred percent of the funds. But if you were to take a portion of those local sa- sales tax dollars, then a certain percentage, whichever was utilized for a bond, would. Or could be viewed as. Not providing property tax relief. Although the counter argument is. Well, the money has to come from somewhere, so. You funded through property tax, so. I believe that's. Why? Because now we're opening up the mechanism to not use it for property tax relief. Even though obviously we can argue that's.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, just Sue, do you wanna, is yours more, uh, like how it's worded or grammar?
Wordsmithing. I think there's some things that could be changed around to make it more clear.
Okay, go ahead, Kara.
I just. Curiosity about if it then. However, it ends up being worded, if it does not pass, then one hundred percent. Of lost funds now. Would need to be applied to property tax relief.
Which ironically, that's what's bizarre about why this year we pulled out. The employee benefits levy rates. In this year's budget is what. We are providing, now this year compared to past years, we are visibly providing property tax relief.
But not to.
From the levy rate.
That, I mean, this, this is a question. Would it mean that the entire lost?
Should be.
Should be.
Providing property tax relief.
So then your overall budget, be, if you've not been using it all in that manner. Would be down. You would lose that amount of money in your general.
The question, so that opens up the next question, which is kinda the question we're going to, which is. What's property tax relief?
Right, and I think that the response that Jerry sent us about our questions was. That the lawyer even said that that's sort of a, an area that is open to some amount of.
It's kind of one of those silly rules where. When they wrote the code, they said you have to define how much is property tax. Relief. I mean, really, it's, it's somewhat to me idiotic. Because every dollar that comes in here. And every dollar that goes out here has an opportunity cost somewhere else. So whether it's local tax, soil tax, property tax, whatever, I. I think it's, I think the way that the law is written, that you have to say zero percent, a percentage, you have to say what percentage is property tax relief, seems very goofy to me because. I mean, I can get it on the other side, but.
Well, you're right because there's, that's gonna vary from year to year typically. And, and certainly in our budget has varied dramatically from year to year depending on the project that we applied lost to.
And she says right here, I guess Jerry's just kinda, uh, highlighting it. Because the admin rules are treating property tax relief and any lawful purpose as alternatives. We have advised that property tax relief should be an actual property tax reduction. There are multiple tax levies available for such reductions. Example, direct reduction to the general fund, supplemental levies or debt service levies. And I don't know where our debt service levies are at in terms of what they could be at. Because I've never, I mean, this is the first time I've seen the breakdown sheet of what all our levies are. Sue, go ahead.
Okay, so if we look at this, um, proposed. Measure that the wording. Under the word proposed uses of the tax. We start out by saying what we're not going to use it for. I like to keep things really simple and. Um. You can't misinterpret this, so I would like it to say under, to say first, what we are going to use it for. So it would say, um, we would keep that first sentence, if the change is approved, revenues from the sales and services tax shall be allocated as follows. And then they would put the one hundred percent for any lawful purpose, blah, blah, blah. And then so just switch around those two lines. Underneath that would be zero percent for property tax relief.
I don't. We can ask the attorney. It'll delay the approval of this, but per the Iowa League of Cities. It lays out in the exact same order what your, how and what you're required to report.
Or can that be an emotion?
It's just lifting them around. We're not leaving out any either.
And I'm saying. It's a defined, it's a defined line item. Certainly.
Thank you. Um. It looks to me like this might be a template. Of which the. Um. When, when the legislation was written, oh, where everyone's going to use for property tax relief. And so there would be a number that was not zero percent there. That's all I'm saying. I would like to say what we are doing with the money first and then what we're not doing with the money because I think that's more clear to our voters. So.
You can ask that question.
Yeah.
But just like all ballots, I think it's.
I completely agree and. In that vein. What I'm concerned about. Is three things. If this doesn't pass. We're not getting a CCL. Cuz we've removed the funding source. Second, if this doesn't pass. We now have a three hundred thousand dollar budget goal. Because now that this is really public this way, we have to apply this to reducing our maximum tax rate, whether it's canceling select parts or not. Uh, we're going to reduce our income. Because we've been co-mating on this. And I. I'm telling Jerry and Lindsay, you're all caught up to date. Right now, I think I understand her budgets as well, sitting one. Um. I know that we're gonna use the money from lost. To pay the bond is our plan. But I think we're gonna recoup that. But I think we're gonna recoup that, my own personal opinion. By catalyzing Main Street and we start getting business development and then we get the property taxes back, because we have a bigger property tax base. So I guess my. The reason I'm worried about the wordsmithing isn't just the CCL. If we don't get the CC, if we don't get this passed, we know that lose the CCL, we lose three hundred grand. And I really think that this.
Not necessarily because our levies are down, but you're, you're right, if we had not reduced our levies. We don't know what the maximum levy is any, like, so for example. I understand what you're saying, we'll check on the language format and see if it can be formatted differently, I'm fine with that. I think it's a standardized part of the law, because that's how it's laid out in the league's articles, like you have to do it bang, 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 bang. We'll clarify if that's true or not. But we're not levying the maximum amount for library or for liability property self-insurance costs. I don't know the difference between what our property tax total is and what we've reduced our levy by. In theory, this budget sheet puts us in more compliance than we have been.
Compared to previous.
I'm not saying that there will, there will be some gap, but there these. This is the evidence that we are providing property tax relief and it's so bizarre because. If you look back at historical years. We were living that every year and all of a sudden not.
Yeah, and I know why she dropped it, but she told me.
You know an explanation that is.
Said that the only reason.
Not legal.
This year was because we had uh two hundred and some thousand dollars at the over. So she said we're building up two hundred and it's on what you guys about. I don't think we've been using it appropriately because we have used a very small portion of it. I don't know if we'll have the ability to go back and correct that and use up our.
Yes.
Saying we're allocating correctly, but yes, I, we never should have.
So. Yes, we should have kept our, yeah.
But I don't.
But I also wanna say.
Tax rate, not reduction, because we can only collect what we spend.
Say that again.
Even if we could theoretically tax a hundred fifty thousand for benefits, we should only tax.
What we can spend.
What we can.
Correct.
So the fact that we didn't charge a hundred fifty thousand, we'll charge seventy five thousand, that's not tax reduction.
And we charge zero, so all of our benefits, FICA and everything is tax reduction.
This year.
Plus our liability above the one twenty.
But that's only this year.
And then what we have to look at is our debt service levy, if our debt service levy is below what we, what we have as a maximum potential, which it shouldn't be.
Most of our debt is associated with um.
We have a GO bond.
Yeah, one.
So if I don't know what that levy rate is versus what it could be. It it still, it doesn't negate the point of what you're, what you're saying in terms of there will be. We will have to police ourselves better related to, are we providing the appropriate amount of relief?
So my only message is.
And I think it's percentage based.
We need to be really behind getting this passed and I like your change of the verbiage, because I think this is. To me, I think the way it's written right now seemed very inflammatory and I'd be the first to look and say, wait, you can reduce my property taxes?
But I also know that Jerry has checked into that, I'm fully convinced we have to have those words, I would just like to swim at order of those words. We can.
And then I think there's one other thing you said.
Positive first and negative second.
There's one other thing, there's one other, what's that, Jerry?
You, I don't, go ahead.
There's one other thing I wanna say is. You said your opening line was, if this doesn't get passed, we don't get a CCL. I disagree with that statement, we don't get the desired design current CCL. We, there are options that we can explore as well. So this funds the current design, the current building, or this is the avenue to secure funds for the current design in the current building.
Yeah.
But we don't know. If that means there's no way it's ever getting done, it just might be that that project is not what gets done. It's something different, because we don't know if an alternative project. Of different scope, size, location, would pass a GO bond or not, because we've never tried that.
Well, we. By the current definition of CCL, if we don't do this, it will not pass, and that's what this council voted for. So.
We also.
Whether what the CCL goes through or not. If this does pass. We've created multiple problems.
So then, so then to your point. Bonding for these funds creates the same problem, using a issuing a bond and using these funds to pay a bond creates the same issue.
It creates a uh, an opportunity, if this doesn't.
It creates a short.
Business development, then.
It creates the same shortfall in the budget immediately.
No, not if we increase our tax base.
But you can't, you, you can't say, you can't, we can't, that's a, we think it will, believe it will.
Yes.
But it creates the same problem, whether it passes or we issue a bond, it does pass when you bond. It's the same, we end it with the same point. We hope that if it does pass, we do get a bond pass, that it will increase property tax values and bring new construction to Main Street. People will come in and build new buildings, we hope that it will and we'll recuperate that.
But if it doesn't pass, we know we are going to lose, we have to reduce our property tax rate, so we're going to have less.
No. No, we don't have to reduce our property tax rate. We have to reduce one of the levy rates somewhere.
We have to reduce our property taxes.
It doesn't have to be our, it does not have to be our consolidated general fund rate. It can come from other avenues.
But either way, our, our total income goes down.
And that will be in the budget season for. The next fiscal budget, starting a year from now, July twenty six, July one twenty six.
If we, we might go back and revisit, so when we, when we passed that. Our intent was for it to be up to a hundred percent. Now we're finding out we, we're not allowed to word it that way. Um, might it solve both sides? We also, Kyra, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection is the figures. To um, for this bond, we would have met what we needed. For that bond to build the building as it stands at eighty percent of our lost money over. I think it was ten years. And we, we, our wording for that initial resolution was to. To make it so that we could go up to a hundred percent and we could go up to twenty years, if I recall that correctly. I don't have any of the forms in front of me. Um. Would we solve some of those same issues by just backing this down to? This doesn't talk anything about the term of our change of use for lost. And would we, would we solve some of those if we designated? Ten percent for property tax relief and ninety percent for the any lawful purpose statement. Um. Because that was just allowing us to move forward with this process and then investigate what all it took and what. What the bonding authority would issue. Or not issue to us based on this pledge of of uh revenue. Does that make sense?
Yes, at least to me, I thought we said eighty percent, but.
I think that was financial advisor number, like you wouldn't be able to. You won't be able to get somebody to back a bond at a hundred percent of local sales tax dollars, because they are, they are. Volatile, they always go, they've gone up based on inflation, but.
I believe that it was eighty percent.
Yeah, and twenty percent, yeah.
Eighty percent.
And I'm sticking with that belief, just I'm very smart from person.
Well, and none of which we can or need to.
So what is, well, what is ninety days, what is ninety days from today?
Yeah, I thought it was eighty four, but yeah, it's not, it's like the day after our next.
We have to have it to the auditor ninety days before the election date, so if November fourth is, it's ninety, I think.
Okay, January eighty four.
My, my question is, if we changed this to a ten, ninety and ten percent. And go ahead and pass it as is, at least it's not gonna be as inflammatory. Uh, appearing and it, and it um still accomplishes what we want accomplished is the ability to do that. I guess with this, the way this makes us state. What our, what our exact percentages are really worries me for the future, because. Like I said, we wanted some flexibility and I don't wanna be locked into any of these percentage amounts. No matter how we do this, we're obviously, once that. Well, I guess we don't, the way it's worded, it can be used for anything. Um.
Honestly, it's better to be worded zero percent for property tax relief in the sense that it creates the vast, the broader usage case. For us to use it. Versus.
But I think it, like Craig says, it, it. Um, I'd rather have a number in there for property tax relief than than a zero percent and a hundred percent. Um. Because it's, I, most taxpayers and most people are gonna vote on this, aren't aware that we've been using it for property tax relief. Or that it's intended for property tax relief anyway. And and um, and so to. To put in there that it's zero and a hundred percent seems uh like a, a. Bigger reason to vote against it when they don't understand either side of the argument before they go to the polls probably.
I'm basically, I mean, the synopsis of what I'm hearing is, we want to check on the, the order that it has to be, can be provided in. Can we change it around and put the usage at top and put the zero percent at the bottom? If we can legally do that, then the, then I hear Sue would prefer that, Craig would prefer that.
Yeah.
Sean would prefer that.
And change the percentage to ten percent.
Ken would prefer that, am I hearing that the consensus group wants to put ten percent property tax relief?
With one question. Lindsay, I'll put you on spot, does managing that turn into a real nightmare?
No.
Okay, so it's not that big a deal to say, one, ten or twenty percent is still dedicated.
To property tax relief?
No.
Okay. That's easy to.
It's a calculation and then it's a percentage deduction off of.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't.
A levy rate.
End up turning it into a good accounting nightmare.
Nope, you're good.
So then you're good for saying ten percent towards property tax relief.
Since we said the eighty, I'll find if we do eighty, twenty or ninety, ten.
I am open to any of those motions.
Well, we also thought that this might have been limited by a timeframe and now we're finding that this is a basically a permanent change. So with it being essentially a permanent change. Those numbers become a little bit more relevant. Um, depending on how the financial services issue the bonds. If they're issuing a ten year bond, then we need at least eighty percent. They're issuing a, a longer bonding period or the ability to refinance those bonds if need be. Then um, then the percentage becomes less and less important for this one particular project's use. So um, in light of its permanence, I don't care if it's ten or twenty percent, but I think we should, I think we should fill in a number for that.
I just. Why? Is a voter gonna go to a ballot and look at it and say, oh, ten percent, that's good, or are they gonna look at anything? What's the difference between zero to ten percent to a voter at a poll? With those words, I mean, they're still gonna see it as. Nothing, right? And the people that don't understand it are not gonna, the people that aren't gonna take the time to try to watch this video back or understand that. The change to these, this wording and zero percent property tax relief. Still affords us the ability to provide, to use all those funds in a property tax relief effort. Let's just say CCL never exists, we're not doing this for that, let's just simplistic terms forty years from now.
Right.
We can use a hundred percent of these dollars to provide property tax relief.
I would argue with a lawyer that I used to have to deal with, that if you say zero percent for property tax relief, it can't be. Anything higher than that. That's why I don't like that first sentence, that's why I'd rather have that word sm- better, because. Some of the nitpicky lawyers that I had to deal with, they would say, no, you said zero percent. And even though down below you said.
Yeah.
All, all purposes, this is no longer lawful purposes, because right here in this sentence, you said zero percent.
And I think.
And one trumps the other.
The way I interpret is what it essentially does, the way. Cause I see all, I can see all sides of it, but the way I interpret what it does is. When you say zero percent for property tax. Relief. It doesn't mean that you're providing zero percent property tax relief, but it has now opened. We now have the ability to use zero percent towards it, it doesn't mean that our action will provide zero percent towards property tax relief. But now we've opened the door to it, and in theory, if we've found someone that would have bond, would bond at a hundred percent. We could take a hundred percent from property tax relief and go build something. And then it wouldn't provide property tax relief. But just because it says zero percent, it doesn't mean us, our wording still affords us the right to dedicate one hundred percent towards property tax relief. By using that money to offset expenses in other categories. And we can still then make, then in theory, you still can hit your lap, do all your levies.
And from a common sense statement, I completely agree. Lawyers don't tend to use common sense, that's not what the language says, so I don't.
And I, I feel like that's what the language is kind of, that's what it's saying is.
On the ballot, this is gonna be a question and then the libraries can be questioned.
No. No, no, we're not close to issuing a bond. This has to happen first, this won't be effective then, I think, until. Sixty days, just those words. And all that's on the ballot really is, it says the names of certain projects, but it also says. Oh, I mean, to my opinion, and I didn't, this is the question I don't know the answer to is. I wonder why name specific facilities versus projects or.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather have it all.
All legal values, zero percent or any other legal value, to me would be a brop. I think where you get into, I think where this issue gets inflated is there's been general obligation votes. Now you see zero percent property tax, then you see, oh, those three projects that I feel like I've already voted on. Is where the combination of the two makes it inflammatory.
Yeah.
Is what I would argue.
If I had my choice in how it's written, the first one would be, as Sue said, the first statement. And would say uh. Any lawful purpose. And then the second statement would say uh. Um. The, the one that's currently first would say a zero percent dedicated for property tax use. And that gives us flexibility, whether it's the CCL, whether the CCL doesn't go through, it gives us flexibility to spend it anywhere. But I think right now with the way it's written. Uh, I think it will leave a bad taste in people's mouth potentially.
Yeah.
What's the money supposed to be used for?
Um, okay, let me take a shot at this, we can, we can discuss it, we can set shit it down.
Property tax relief, like reducing levy rates. We're, we don't have good documentation that says that's exactly how it's been applied.
Right.
But it was supposed to, your levy rate's supposed to be deducted percentage wise that way. Somewhere of a levy rate in our levying abilities. And there was a reduction, this year there was a reduction in two line items on levies, which was not what our historical practice has been.
I got my property tax statement last night.
Yeah, we all did, it was last week.
Four thousand eight hundred dollars figure out of my property.
That's what we get annually, four thousand eight hundred? Do you think we could get fourteen thousand?
No.
Okay.
I think that you should do those zero things, would be great to.
So Ken, go ahead.
Um, so I'm just gonna make a motion that we, we change the wording. Of this, that, that if possible, we, we put what its purpose is and leave it as general as possible, so that. Um. And again, I would rather put up to ninety percent if that's, if that's available as a wording option on here. Um, for any lawful purpose.
Okay.
And I would rather word that first, like Sue's recommendation was, and that we, and then. That the second part of that would, would be that. Um. A minimum of ten percent would be dedicated to property tax relief. Uh, and then leave the rest of it the same. And if possible, I, I agree, I would, I would rather not necessarily list what. What um. Projects we're specifically looking at, because those are gonna change over time, this is a permanent document we're creating tonight, not a one time document.
Yeah, I think we need to view what we're talking about tonight having nothing to do with a specific project, and it's become very much about a specific project, which. Brings in the concern, in my opinion, brings in everyone's concern, because there's stakeholders that wanted to pass for a certain project. And I think we should strip that away from this and look at it from a logic standpoint, and the logic says. Changing this use makes sense regardless of if there's a specific project.
Correct.
Because it opens the avenue to other projects, changing this tonight doesn't ever mean that there'll be a bond issued for any project.
Correct.
Good.
I reviewed some other cities who have changed. Property tax relief to other purposes. I don't know if it's a rule or not, but all of them have had a list of certain things, whether that's.
Okay.
Road construction in sidewalks or whether it's buildings. All of them have had some specified um purposes, um. I, I don't know what the rules are, but the ones that I reviewed all had that, so that might.
A list of stuff.
That there's a list of could include. That there's a list of could included things, I I don't, I don't know, but they all have.
Yeah.
But I I agree, Taylor, it'd be better to have him share.
Yeah.
I I think this.
It affords us more freedom.
Yeah, this is a decision outside of the CCL. This would give us freedom with the loss the way we have been using them previously. And it's a separate decision than the CCL.
Yeah, I mean, I. I think at this point, everybody knows what everybody, how, where everybody stands on specific projects and different things. I think uh if this fail, let's say it fails in your comment, the CCL's dead, then if this doesn't pass. Are we not putting this back on the ballot again in a year because? This is a a broader, more logical use and affords us the autonomy to use that money. In other scenarios, right, like are are we, are we gonna end up trying to make this change? In the future, even if it doesn't pass this time, not for a project, but just for the general flexibility of it. As the legislature pressures our levy rate down. And, you know, takes tools like TIF away and things like that. How do we?
Yeah, this is the right thing to do.
Keep up with expenses.
That's why I'd rather not have the CCL components in here.
I think we've uh beat that horse uh long enough, what's Ken's motion?
I would, I would include leaving the retirement of debt incurred for. You know, that we can use it for any, any lawful purpose and the retirement of debt incurred for any such purpose. That makes sense, so that last part of that sentence makes a lot of sense to me, but to list specific projects in there um. Makes it sound like you would have to go back and pass this again when you're, when you wanna build a. Emergency services building, or redo the roads, or whatever thing you're talking about.
Or can you do that with the wording the way it is?
I think any lawful purpose would.
Pretty much encompasses a lot.
Right.
Unless there's a lawful purpose of local sales tax definition.
So I don't know if we can dumb it down that far or not.
The question is. Has anybody read the code about the, not to beat the horse more, but has anybody read the code about the avenue that's been recommended? The way that a revenue bond can be issued. Four twenty-three B, there's four twenty-three B, but there's some subcategories where. I didn't think about the wording in here of retirement of debt. But when I read the section of the code and the avenue we're using, there's a section about for the retiring of debt. And then it talks about basically what is the reverse referendum process? Where three percent of the register's voters. In in the. In the previous. From the town, or from the registered voters in the area that you're talking about can. Petition, and then the council is faced with the decision to. Drop the pursuit of the bond or call for an election, which then requires a sixty percent threshold. And that's, the retirement of debt is where I felt like that legislation was reading to. So if the. I'm wondering if the retirement of debt is in there, does that then create? Does that then open up the reverse referendum, because what I understood when this was the avenue is that. This couldn't be reverse referendum, that the council could pass a bond.
There are two options. And one would require would open you up to a reverse referendum, but you can get a better interest rate by half a point, the other one did not.
And this, well. What you're thinking of is what the attorney, the finance person recommended, we try to do, even if this does pass and we do pursue, a bond does pass. I'm saying that we. This section says. If we try to pass a revenue bond, three percent of the voters. Can make a call for a vote, which will require a sixty percent pass.
Right, which that was the revenue. The revenue bond was the one that was a lower interest rate, the other one, I can't remember what she called it. But that was potentially a half point higher.
No, I get what you're saying, but I'm. I'm saying a petition could take, could take away the right to issue the bond in the first place.
Only one way, the other way not, according to.
I'm just wondering, because of the debt, the retirement of debt in here on it, it says this. In the terms, sorry, it's on my phone, so it's. I mean, it's more of an attorney question, we don't have to debate it tonight. They provided that that language, I think, at the direction of what was been, had been provided from. Jennifer, I I'm not sure where the initial language came from. Steve, who met with Ken and Craig the initial time, I think, is who crafted the language.
Different person than Jen, I don't remember her name.
Yeah. Wish I could find this section, I'll share, I'll share this section of the code with you guys um. Cause it talks about the retirement of debt, using a bond like, using the funds from local sales tax. And a bond for the retirement of debt. And creating. That opening.
But again, that's next step, this one is allowing additional use, more flexible use of lost. So I guess I will second Ken's motion to reverse the order of the two statements.
If possible, yeah.
If possible.
Ninety, ten?
Go with ninety, ten, if possible. And if the lawyer says we cannot do those two things, well, the ninety, ten, they won't object to, if we can't reverse the statements. And if we can't take out some of the. The uh descriptions of what they need to be used for. That we accept this as is. Again, cause I'm not sure we have a choice.
Is this council really feel like the difference between on the ballot being zero percent and ten percent? Is gonna change.
We'll see what they both like.
The outcome, because that that ends us into then always.
So can this never be changed?
We could vote again to change it back to a hundred percent property tax relief or different percentages.
Yeah.
But I'm just wondering, like, is, is ten percent the make or break difference here, otherwise just go zero.
Making a permit thing for all projects, it'd be great to have it.
It's zero.
Zero.
This is that much money, I I do think for some voters, ten percent will make a difference.
I do too.
And I, I am in favor of that, because it caters to those people who it will make a difference to. The actual dollar amount is not that much. So.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with.
Yeah, it's like thirty thousand dollars. That year, the amount that you've received recently was around two hundred and eighty thousand.
Eighty-six last year.
We happy to make, have twenty eight cities later, not only loses his clerk.
Hey, you're on, hey, you're on a, you're still on a.
Tell him he's gonna stick around for a little.
I muted him. So. All right, there's a first and a second, so all those in favor of the motion to request a rearrangement of the wording to. Move the purpose to the top and the change to the bottom. And to adjust ninety percent for the stated reasons and ten percent for property tax relief, signify with the sign I.
And we're gonna, if the lawyers allow, remove some of the descriptions in the. How will we spend the ninety percent now?
That wasn't part of his motion, but. That wasn't in Ken, so if if we remove the.
Like where they're listing general, like.
The question is, will. If the attorney says that any lawful use would allow us to bond for the projects listed. Then can we scrap the projects and just use the word any lawful use?
That's what I'm suggesting, is dump it down as far as we can, so it's really simple.
If the words can say any lawful use only. Will that cover us for a revenue bond for those projects? Should counsel pursue that? And if we need to.
Take out the description.
If any lawful use will still provide the avenue for a revenue bond for. Projects of that nature.
This one or any other.
I think that's what you wanna do, because you don't wanna just remove them and then realize later that there was a definition for any lawful use, and that's doesn't mean. Bond, a bond like this doesn't mean any lawful use. You get that, Lindsay?
Yep, I've been writing on my paper over here.
Okay.
We'll get together.
Did we determine that? August eleventh is inside of ninety days.
Ninety days from today, is that covered?
And so.
They'll go backwards from voting day.
So.
The same thing.
Four days from today.
So we have to. We have to approve it. We we could. We could call another special meeting. In four days, if we found out detrimental information.
Well, that's why I put the caveat, and if we can't do this, then we leave it as is.
Anything that I get, I'll distribute it to the full city council.
We're gonna, I I said that as my.
Just respond individually, don't respond collectively.
He's saying that because of the open meeting.
Yep, no, no repiles, because that will get, that is. Very good.
I think so.
I'm gonna restate the motion, just so that it's clear. But there was a motion from Ken, Craig amended that motion a little bit. And what the motion is, is first. Request if, clarify if the, if the format has to be in a certain format, or if the purpose. Of change can be at the top, and what we're changing from can be near the bottom, and we can flip the Y and then the the change to the bottom. Adjust to ninety percent. For the description that they end up using, ten percent for property or tax relief. Also ask whether we need to list the project, list. Have the list of projects and any lawful use, or if any lawful use will cover the those projects. So that's the first and the second. Does that cover everything that you wanted in there? And you're good, Sue, okay, all those in favor.
Yep, one other quick question for Jerry. Um, this might also necessitate a call to the bonding agent, just to make sure that. By not listing a specific project in here. If that's, if they still feel comfortable issuing the bonds based on that general statement of for any legal purpose. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can look into that. We can ask the attorney, and that's Heidi, who didn't call me back today about the other.
Okay.
About why this changed.
So these are the same people, right?
These are the ones we met with, yeah, and Heidi never got back to me today, I asked her to call me first thing this morning to ask her about this other form.
One question you can ask.
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't understand how we can actually vote on anything tonight, when all you have a list of questions, well, we could do this, we could do that. Don't you have to know a specific thing to vote on? Cause it looks, sounds to me like you guys got questions for the attorney and the bonding agent, which will depend on. On how you're gonna word this on November second ballot. Well, I mean, as you said, it could be this, if we can't do that, then it's this, don't you have to know what you're approving here today?
I think we're comfortable with either way, and we've indicated our preferences to Jerry and. We're good with the, we've indicated a preference, but we're good with it whichever.
Yeah, we'll take it like it is right here. But.
Define what we're at, thinking about changing.
I do. Ask the attorney.
Yeah.
Ask the questions, if it's amended, ask the attorney whether we need to convene another meeting to.
I can ask that.
Ask the motion.
I think the process that we're going through is. Is it. Appropriate, they're responding to a document that was prepared by the city's attorney. And it's a recommendation to make adjustments to what was prepared. You know, s- subject to it being legal. And if it's not, then, you know, they are saying that they would support the original document.
And if it's adjusted. Yeah. I I'm fine with the motion. I've, I'm fine with the motion, I think it comes down to just double check with the attorney. If we are amending language and not accepting what was provided tonight. If they feel we need to. Well, that's. Me and approve it.
Instead of be.
Different, this or that. But if they say, hey, we can make those changes and your council's already approved it. You're good to go, then. Good to go, but it would be, I think it's a fair question to just verify. Were we okay, are we okay approving it and this being the language this way, because we should be able to have that answer tomorrow.
That's that, that happens more than just here through, so yeah, good answer, we have it, we know.
Yeah, I think the key is, let's just not leave it um. Let's just have it buttoned up.
Yep.
And if it takes, if it takes a council meeting on Monday night.
Yep.
To approve one item, then that's what we'll, we'll do.
Yeah.
Or at the ninety days, so. All right, the motion's defined, all those in favor signify with I.
I.
Opposed? And any abstentions, all right. Um, update on deputy clerk, we'll kinda go through these fast if we can, these last few items, we're here.
Seventh, for Boone County.
Yes, sorry, we need to do the discussion on the resolution seven, this is just for the Boone County, since our, we stretch into two different counties.
I move all the same things for. Uh, resolution six, except for changing from Story County to Boone County.
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor signify with I. Opposed, same sign. And abstentions. Thank you, Lindsay. Deputy clerk, Jerry's just gonna give a really quick update and oversight here.
Yeah, brief update, the city council approved the. Um, position for deputy city clerk, utility billing clerk, and uh the support to post that position. Staff posted it on the League of Cities website, and then the city's social media. Deadline is actually tomorrow, August first, so far we we've received seven applications, uh which is a fair um number. Um, I can't give specific information. About the actual candidates, but I can tell you that three of those candidates reside in the city of Slater. One is from Ames, one is from Story City, one from Huxley, one from Ankeny. The experience uh background is somewhat diverse, there's two that have a banking background. One with uh community, customer service, one that's a community service advocate. An office manager, one with a transportation fleet, uh fleet manager background. And then another with um ag credit logistics. Uh, quite a few of them had. Uh, education beyond high school. With business finance uh background, IT. Uh, general ed, public administration, business and city planning. And the process will be, we'll go through the applications, we're planning on setting up interviews. I think we landed on Thursday next week um. Likely in the afternoon. But tentatively, you know, most people give at least two weeks notice, so tentatively, we may have somebody in here. Um, yeah, August twenty-fifth. Or September first, depending on.
Perfect, any questions for Jerry and the applicants, he's gonna start on that project next week.
Think you go to team select interviews, but if something falls through. I'm available, I think Sue would. She's done interviews for us before, so.
I have, but not next Thursday, I'm not.
I'll throw you under the bus.
Go ahead, Ken, you had a question?
Yeah, just a quick question, Jerry, those were the, seven was the total number of applications, or were those ones you considered qualified, or or of those seven, how to? How many, from at least a first glance, do you consider qualified applicants?
I would say five to six would be qualified, meeting the minimum requirement.
That is total, seven is total, received.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Uh, this is just a a quick discussion consideration, we continue to battle the tech bug here, as we try to sort out the right way to move forward. From what we were, where we're going, how we do it. What was provided in the packet is um a document that just runs through a hypothetical Amazon card estimate. Um, it's nothing super technical, uh Chad Fleaner helped us pull this together, just for the sake of. Um, he works in that profession uh day to day and offered to look at those with us. What that does for the group is. This essentially um. Replace, provides Jerry with a laptop. And provides Mark with an updated laptop, Mark is working on a quite old laptop. It provides the monitors to have a a station, a workstation, two monitors for Jerry, two monitors for Mark. The ports to be able to plug those in, and the keyboards to do that, it also provides. The docking station and a keyboard set. For a um. The laptop we have in the back that the screen's broken on. We have a laptop in the back, we'd set up a basically a text stand here at the counter with us, at the far end. Where Lindsay could operate and take minutes and also be able to run. Where Lindsay could operate and take minutes and also be able to run the meeting, run the presentation of the meeting. And we'll use that old laptop will be sufficient enough with the broken screen. We'll plug the old screen into it and just use. The port and the keyboard to do that. This is equipment based. We're still working on and had an indication from Xerox. We've talked to U S signal and the I T guy we're using now. Craig about emails as we get set up. Jerry is still operating in the city of Slater at Huxcom email. Lindsay's kind of operating in the moment at Slater Iowa at Huxcom. We talked about in the preference for Jerry and. I think is logical is to move towards city of Slater, Slater, Iowa dot org email based emails. Um, and that comes with like a licensing, an annual licensing that then gives the Microsoft products. The way our computers are set up, which most people don't know is we buy all of the actual hardware and like, in the old days, C D ROM install it. You download it now. We buy the physical. You know, Microsoft Word program and download it on the computer and so it's on one computer and that's all you can use it on. You, you can't interchange easily between the computers. Programs are unavailable to certain users. Somewhat messy and clunky in that sense. And then we have our stagnant server, which isn't gonna go away at this time. But in the future, we'll, and in the budget season, we'll be evaluating what a migration looks like to a more cloud based. Modern tech strategy, but the license is associated with that. Did you have that right here, Jerry? The what Xerox sent?
It was an.
Just from an estimated standpoint, what we talked about was um. And I said, I I suggested this um, timeline. We talked about just Jerry, Lindsay, Mark, Mark staff. Getting the email coordination set up. We'd also include like kinda some stock boxes, email boxes like accounts payable at Slater Iowa dot org. And then an info at Slater Iowa dot org that could be website based and also vendor based. Then you'd have Jerry dot more, Mark dot Estram, Lindsay dot Siegel, Jason Crowsey, uh, Jason dot Crowsey is excellent. And so on with the public work staff, Jerry, Lindsay, the utility billing clerk. Those two blank emails. Library, we weren't gonna bite off cuz they have their Slater library dot org at the time. And then we would target and discuss deeper into the year, a group, a broader migration that would give council emails. With, uh, council people would be assigned an email and all those things, but I thought maybe we would bite that off after January first or in the new year. For, for the broader usage, um. And those, those uh, licenses, depending on the license type, so like. Accounts payable at Slater out or doesn't need the full office. They just need a web of an email basically. And we move our domain to that. Um, the Xerox gave us an indication on it, which. These prices are stagnant in terms of uh, like their Microsoft Office. Not.
It's like eight to ten dollars per fifty. Per month.
Per user, right? And using eight to ten dollars per user for the email server and then all the Microsoft products. Which would include teams and uh, Word and Excel and those things. So that isn't listed on like, hey, what does this look like? We're talking about like, call it ten dollars an employee per month. So a hundred and twenty per year and we're talking about, I think right now, three here. Um, for Public Works, so seven. The cheaper one email one, two cheaper email ones. And then uh, E M Chad would like to have one. Uh, E M, he'd like to get EMS them in the nearer future. I'm pushing for the January because. They do their reporting and fill out reporting information, which is uh, P I I. Personal identified information, which is HIPAA, has some HIPAA stuff related to it. So he would like them to be able to. Do that reporting and email back and forth reports and those things via. We're gonna look into that a little further, but he was asking about one, so it would, could extend to him, so. But is that another twelve hundred dollars a year probably and techish?
The Xerox have a bulk, so if we get to a, a certain break, they give you. A price point they give you, if you got fifty addresses.
We hadn't been told that. The, the maximum number Chad helped with an exercise where we envisioned like, if everybody we could think of got on. It was like sixty eight users and that is assuming every volunteer fire department, partner, uh, department member. Every fire department member, which I don't know if that's, that's maybe a phasing thing for us and we haven't even talked to fire about that concept. That's, you know, we'll add pool when pool season rolls around probably to create continuity.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But we tried to do shared boxes in those senses. So what we talked about in those scenarios was like, city of Slater is a shared box in theory, right? One person worked behind it, but it was really not signed up to be somebody. We would do the same thing for the places that we could like. Slater Pool would be, our pool manager would take that account over and change the password and use that access. So EMS chief would at, at Slater out or would use and have that. Um, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm used to Microsoft, they had all the breaks, so I wanna make sure that.
Yeah, fifty users at nine dollars is four hundred and fifty bucks a month or fifty four, fifty four hundred annually.
Doesn't look like a break. On our quantity scale, it doesn't, we're not aware of a break.
Okay, that's cool. And Xerox, if we go that way, they can offer all of the services that like Amazon and Microsoft and Google. The, I, I just didn't.
They just, we just be buying, we could buy Microsoft through them and they could help set it up for us.
I just wanna make.
There would probably be like a charge for that. What we had talked about is utilizing Craig, who's our tech guy that we've used historically Slater's guy to set that up for us. And pay him hourly to, we have to enable our domain to accept mail and.
Yep.
You know, there's that tech stuff that I don't know enough about, but I know functionality wise.
No, and uh, uh, completely supportive, I just wanna, sure, Xerox, cuz I didn't know they did.
We're not sure that that's the one, or we've talked to U S signal, we've talked to Craig. We're not sure that we're right, that necessarily we have to go into a partnership with a deeper like vendor partner at this point.
Anything like that will come before council before we.
Anything sizable like changing a partner like that, because we'd be looking for that partner for like the partnership and the migration from where we're at today. On a static server and Wi Fi networks, like there's Wi Fi technology now where. We could have one router for the whole, all city properties and do different things through Huxcom and so. It's way over my head at this point, but the email portion of it and the equipment portion is why it's in front of you tonight is because. You know, we want Jerry and Jerry especially to get out, meet people in the county, interact with business owners, provide them how to get ahold of him. And right now he's, hey, I've got this email that we're probably gonna make obsolete. Um, with Ramp, there's a platform with Ramp. If we get an accounts payable, then we can get a record of all our invoices, auto forward those invoices to this ramp email. And then all of our invoice management moves into it, the technology platform. So there's.
Completely supportive. I just wanna make sure Xerox gives us everything we concede going forward.
Yeah, I think the hardest part for it and I'll be, I'll be honest, what Jerry has pushed back the most about, we probably should have been pushing this. Earlier and hindsight's twenty twenty always about what we have and where we're at, but. Jerry's like, I don't know, I don't wanna, has been really hesitant to spend any money because we, our budgeting process didn't necessarily outline. That we budgeted for X amount of.
If you want to hear.
Two, so.
We were way behind, so.
So. We're getting close. Keep the burgers warm, Bonnie.
That was it. I just wanna make sure.
Ken, do you have any questions about it?
No, I think just in terms of the numbers of emails that we're gonna have to do that with, I would, I would think we would use. Um. You know, council and full time employees and then, and then anything that's part time would be. By that department manager forwarded to their personal email. Um, so you just limits the number you have plus. I mean, if I was on a board, I'm not sure I wanna have to check another email. How frequently I would check something like that to see an email when I'm just a board member on planning and zoning.
Yeah, and I don't think we're talking about extending that far. Like planning and zoning and.
That's where you got your sixty eight number, right, was.
Fire.
No, I think fire ends up being quite a few of those cuz. I don't, I'm not on board with fire doing that. And I would just say right, right now, all I think council, I would ask council to approve is. The core staff we have here at city hall, Mark's staff. And the, the generic inboxes of info at Slater Iowa dot org and accounts payable. And then we will add the pool on. When the times right and we'll debate how far this city issued email extends. One of the partners talked to us about. Uh, department issued equipment. And maybe matching where whoever gets department issued equipment, gets department issued emails versus. But I think for council, the beauty would just be that you wouldn't then have to expose your personal emails to what could be, become open record requests. But.
We'd use A L I S, there's lots of.
We will keep it scaled tight right now because it's just, it's more about functionality for the new staff. And for setting the, turning the page to move forward than it is about. Uh, like, we gotta get everybody in line now. I think we'll have to figure that out.
We need to get this going and then we can figure.
We'll figure that out later. And, and we can add the nine bucks on a month or the annual charge at any point we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, just make sure you keep your eye on, yes, we can't expand that far.
Yep.
Some future date.
So Taylor, you looking for a motion to.
I just want, I just, uh, yeah, I think it'd be good on the technology part that we'd have a motion to approve and then just the indication that, hey, we're are looking to set these emails up. That comes with an annual charge basically for these folks.
And you're looking for a dollar amount in that motion?
This dollar amount's gonna be more than that. That's just for this equipment.
So do we, we, we can make, I'm good at making a motion and I'm good with getting after this, but word.
I would leave that to Jerry.
In front of the council though, if we do end up working with Xerox, if we end up working with Craig and his company, whoever we end up working with, I'd like to put that contract. Before city council, but if they, cuz you're trying to, we're trying to let them know that. You know, we're working on the Microsoft Office three sixty five and setting up the email addresses.
So you're good waiting till August eleventh to get an email?
Well, I'm getting email, but.
I, I'm fine with whatever you want. It's your preference.
I, I don't know what that's gonna cost.
You need equipment.
I do.
We need equipment, we can get that, they can approve this.
So I'll make a motion, we approve for this equipment. If this is gonna be all we need.
Costs to do the rest. I haven't, we haven't received anything.
That's your call. In terms of, if you wanna ask for the annual cost of.
Well, I'm not even worried about annual cost yet. I'm just worried about, is this enough to get him computers?
That would get him a desktop setup. And then.
Emails, we know that.
Yep, and we have a laptop we bought for Kelly that will move down the list to the next person that's due for one, which will probably be Public Works team.
Yeah, well, I might worry about them either.
So.
I mean, let's get these guys, get this going, we can get.
They're working under city of Slater. To me, the equipment is less the burden is the email, like getting them the email.
Yeah.
But I mean, person.
Research on who we're gonna use.
That's what we've had meetings and we've got meetings set up.
Craig is ninety bucks an hour, um, that our current I T guy that we.
So that's part of the motion to go with Craig to set up.
I mean, I, I think to set this type of thing up is, you know, you consider if even if you considered it.
And he did tell us two and a half hours to do it.
That's, he, he said it, he thought he could have it changed in two and a half hours. I would say. Plan on a day and if we're under, we're under, but.
Maybe we go five grand.
I think five grand that would be plenty.
If you do a max.
I think five grand would be plenty to purchase this equipment and maybe.
Get some emails started.
Yeah, and to give us up to, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we uh, go up to five thousand without any further review to give the equipment and.
Emails.
Emails going, started.
Okay, all those in favor signify with, go ahead.
One, uh.
Deliberation.
Yeah, deliberation, thank you. Uh, Lenovo, uh, with. That all, which, what if can't people sit in, but with Trump's beef with China, you made one avoid. Chinese manufacturer. I have Lenovo myself, but I am worried about.
This one was on special, we thought it was a good deal.
And I agree, normally I wouldn't have beef with it.
Support wise.
Add things happen with China and all those things I would hate to have.
To use your, to use your words before, uh, about legisla- waiting on legislation to determine what they're gonna do and taking action. I think, I hear what you're saying, we could evaluate a competitive all.
A product that's comparable.
Completely behind it, you may wanna shy away from Chinese stuff, maybe go South Korean or. I'm not sure there.
Okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And any abstentions? Uh, what are the burgers tonight? Ken, what is dinner tonight? Just since we've heard a little bit, could you enlighten us?
Uh, uh, seasoned pork chop.
Okay, bone in or boneless?
Uh, they're uh, boneless and uh, fried cuz I'm not available for grilling.
And we haven't all, no sides.
Uh, sweet corn.
That sounds fabulous. I'll take Ken, your motion to adjourn and eat.
Uh. I have a quick question with just about this whole platform, the billing platform or paying platform.
Yes.
How's that going?
Cards issued, we have cards issued, Jerry, Mark, Jen have cards. Uh, Jen Gogarty is out of office. Um, right now, we have uh, Lindsay's card we're working on. We had our first meeting the other day with them and started to do some setup. I think the ability to. Set things up and manage things the way we wanna manage is a bunch of autonomy. There is a follow up on Wednesday where we'll be putting in the chart of accounts. One of the things that Lindsay's working on right now is. The number of uh, accounts in our system that we were utilizing and working through is an astronomical number compared to the actual functionality and usage. So we are going to be closing out a long list of accounts that haven't been utilized in our technology. Um, so that we'll input only the usable accounts into the software so that we can get allocation correctly. This should provide us uh, instant visibility to current invoices. And all card transactions. And so there should be no, can you pull a credit card statement? It should be as simple as. Jerry or Lindsay logging into Ramp and downloading. Uh, a list of the open invoices or the last thirty days invoices or six months invoices. And credit card transactions or charge cards.
Save receipts now too?
They, we will not have to save the paper receipts. We'll start saving electronic receipts. They'll take a picture, but every time they charge their card, they'll get a text and it'll say, you just ran your card for this. We've set the threshold that any charge for anything more than a penny requires a receipt by uh, law, we have to do that. So we'll get a receipt, they'll be triggered to take a picture and scale, save the receipt right then.
Them can create the receipt.
And the system also.
Branding information, like it'll have the company's logo information on there.
If Visa and them work together, they can, they can create that on the back end, so. Um, it will definitely cut down on the receipt management and paper coming in and like Jen Gogarty won't. You know, have to necessarily bring all our invoices in. She can code those and set those up, so. Is that a fine red or a white? So is that a, is that a good, uh, is that a good answer for the, is that give you enough of an update? Hopefully we're.
Are the costs associated with this based on a percentage of, of charge or are they uh, more of a monthly?
No, it's just a flat six thousand dollars for the year. And then we will get the point seven five cash back. We purchased the cheaper of the two options that were on the table to start. And if we feel like, hey, this works really good and we like it, then we'll try to go for the one percent cash back. But we'll be feeling out the vendors as we go and trying to be methodical about, uh, be mindful of the three pers- you know, the charge. Uh, the, the um, merchant charge being passed to us versus not and be, try to be mindful of like not trading. You know, uh, point seven five cash back for, you know, three percent charge. Uh, we'll try to be as mindful as we can on that. But try, also try to migrate as much as we can towards this for the efficiencies related to just processing.
Absolutely.
Staffing.
Right, there's costs, there's a lot of costs related to time and writing checks as well, so.
Yeah. Yep, so, and the cost of checks and that's the other thing that's nice is. Their treasury department could actually issue all of our checks for invoices if we wanted.
Oh.
So we could bill pay from their site. So.
Buddy, if we put a hundred thousand and get charged three percent, it's three grand and. In the big picture, efficiency batting that much.
Yeah, and then that out, yeah. Yep. All right. You started, um, did you have any, any other follow ups?
For the record, I'm good. Received another application for the city clerk, deputy clerk. So, yeah, it was this evening, so maybe they're tuning in.
So now Lindsay's here, we're excited to have her. She's done a phenomenal job coming in and busting out some projects right out of the gate. Uh. Think we got a really good team, so excited.
She had the energy and forward motion from our new staff. We're glad to have you guys here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Perfect. Perfect. All right, Ken.
I move, we adjourn.
Second. I would like to say though, I I stopped in today. I got a hug from Lindsay I never got from Jerry.
Uh oh.
Just a point.
Come in tomorrow morning. Come in tomorrow.
He's at the lake.
Oh, okay.
He's best to be hugged after an hour call with an attorney, so we'll, we'll let you know when it's.
They need a hug tomorrow.
All right. We've got a first and a second. First from Sean, second from Ken. All those in favor signify with I.
I.
Opposed. And abstentions. Thank you.
See you. Put that in the minutes, Lindsay.
Okay.
See ya.